Yeah.
I'm just sitting in the chair.
I want to get Barb.
Okay.
We can live up, plug me live.
I think so.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a moment of silence? Thanks very much, and we'll get started. I have a motion on minutes.
Do you make a motion or what? The minutes?
I'll second that. And she seconded. Any changes? Questions? Concerns? Seeing none? Seeing none? Still seeing none?
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
I didn't see the blind look. I was waiting for the blind look to give them, you know.
Opposed?
I'm in favor, so I'll just see.
Abstentions? Kent and Ginny abstained. Otherwise, that brings us to a seven hour, right?
Seven to two.
That's not what I'm hoping to do. It has to be three times, right?
Excuse me?
No.
I only did it because I saw people reading. And so, I thought, hmm, best to give everybody the opportunity to jump in.
Three times only when you're lucky enough.
I'm going to pass around the folders. I have the substitute reports. You don't need those.
Those are for you to sign.
And that would be the substance of. Commendations and good news.
Do you want to introduce our new student rep, Dominique Poullet, who will be joining us from now on? She was just recently elected.
Congratulations on your election.
Thank you.
And you know it's a baptism by fire.
Yes. Liz couldn't be here tonight to coach her, so she's here by herself.
She just started a new job, so she left me here.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Last Thursday, the Eddies came to Goffstown High School, and they came to each of the classes and walked around, and there was presentations that went on, senior cap. There's also the Penny Slam going on to raise funds and proceeds for relief in Haiti and Japan. The grades close around April 8th. They close, and then court cards come out the 15th, and the NEWA testing begins next week. But besides that, there isn't much happening.
Thanks very much.
Can you just, for the audience out there, explain to them what the Eddies are? That's such a wonderful thing.
Actually, I was going to ask Dominique if she could explain what the Eddies are.
They're, the Eddies, nickname is for the educators, pretty much. They, they come around for, and they inspected, like, just the way that the classes are going around Goffstown High School, just because we're finalists for the New Hampshire Public Schools. So, and then after they evaluate everything, we'll see what things we got. Where there's, I think there's three other finalists in the future.
Terrific. Wow. Good luck at Goffstown High School. Peggy?
Thanks. Good news for Maple. Mr. Landano, our music teacher, will conduct a spring string concert tomorrow, Tuesday, April 5th, here at the high school at 7:00 PM. We have 55 students in this program. Two of our DI teams participated in the state tournament on Saturday. Maple Mountain View took first place and will be going on to the global finals. Congratulations to Griffin Hanson, Morgan McCabe, Craig Allison, Sarah Conley, Abby Poussin, and Ian Winrow, and their coach, excuse me, Lisa Winrow. I'm not telling.
I just want to say that NWA testing started today in Mountain View, so we're a little on the low-key side, so we can keep the kids focused and let you get on.
And how long does it go on for?
It goes through the end of next week, I believe. It rotates. I know my team doesn't take the tests until Friday, Monday, Tuesday, so, because we're doing it in the computer labs and in the library, so they have to run all the, take the kids through. So it's about two weeks. About two weeks.
Terrific. Any other?
I would just like to say that Kent took a beautiful picture in the paper with his daughter. Looked like they were having a really good time, and he's quite photogenic.
Well, I just happened to be in the picture of my daughter. It was purely accidental. It was a good time, though. The father-daughter dances really are a terrific evening. It's, I'm sad to say that it's the last year that I'll be participating in it with my daughter, because she'll be moving on to fifth grade. So, but it's really, it's really, really well done, and it's something I recommend to all parents and all fathers to go and do, just be there.
And were you Natalie attired?
I think I had on one of my suits. Yeah.
Jennifer?
I happened to catch wind of a Goffstown 250th committee meeting that happened last Thursday, and I just want to say that committee is really dedicated to putting on quite, quite an event for the town to celebrate, and it's, there's going to be several different opportunities to celebrate. There's going to be time at Old Home Day, and the big event is going to be August 27th, where they're going to have a street, they're going to shut down some of the streets in the center of town, and there'll be fireworks, and I think it would be a really great idea. I know that Mountain View had the chance to purchase 20 of the, the books that Elizabeth De Bruhl wrote, so I'm going to actually suggest to that committee that they submit to the schools for their bulletins, you know, save the date area, the dates that are coming up, so that the kids will know, because some of the stuff will happen when they're not in school.
Yeah, and we've been getting out the word, like we're doing, they're having a scavenger hunt, and we're giving handouts to all the kids with the books available in the school. So, and all of the schools have been participating at a variety of different levels.
Yeah.
Like the high school, actually, we bought the book for all of the high school, the history classes, so they're actually, every school has been really participating since January. They were supposed to have one, one event per month. So, I just.
Just out of curiosity, when we roll out beyond the end of the school year, is this something we can use our mail notification system to send out a reminder to people of dates as they're coming up, or maybe even at the beginning of summer? But I know I get mail from.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, if I know about them, you know, absolutely. And we've worked well with both the library and the 250th to get things out in different bulletins, and the schools certainly have, you know, done their exposure within their own buildings for what they're doing. I think we're, Maple Ave is going to do, they're having, at that celebration they're doing, they're going to sing the, they wrote a happy birthday Goffstown song that they'll be singing, and so we've participated through a lot of different activities.
The final hoopla comes before the summer mailing goes out at the elementary schools and the middle school, so maybe the 250th can include something. I'll suggest that.
Yeah, they need to get us the information.
Yeah, I'll suggest that to them.
Any other commendations or good news? Public comment?
Donna Bernard, 65 Riverview Park Road. I watched the GTV program that Phil Pantost and Diane McCarthy made before deliberative session, and one of the things that you presented on that program was that the budget committee members just didn't know the right questions to ask in regards to cutting the special ed line, because you can't legally cut the special ed line when you have to fulfill IP's, because they are a legal document. Two weeks ago, however, when the deliberative budget needed to be implemented, four paraprofessional positions were cut, and two halftime special ed teachers. So, I'm just wondering where legally budget committee members couldn't cut, and then all of a sudden with the deliberative, I mean, but with the default budget, all of a sudden, special ed line was cut. I don't understand.
So, that I understand your question. You're inquiring as to how cuts were made that you believe the board said could not be made.
Well, the TV program said.
I understand. I just want to make sure that I understand. You believe that there is a contradiction between something that was presented and something that was done. We'll get back to you on that. Thanks very much.
Okay. And then, the other thing I just wanted to say was, when you have a Goffstown school board member on the budget committee, rather than waiting for them to ask the appropriate question, shouldn't you be just volunteering the information when these things come up?
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'm going to move on to standing committee reports. Admin and finance.
I would like to move the manifest in an amount of $1,290,182.
Okay, the second? Second.
I'll second that.
Okay. The, excuse me, the major items are the payroll, $495,938. Provider, this is transportation for special ed provider from January and February, $102,128. And the monitors for the provider for the same period, $5,201, which was a total for special ed of $107,330. The other items, Fed Fuller Oil, $24,399. G4 Communications, this is for the hub service, data hub service, from 10:10 through 4:30, A Microsoft Office License Renewal, $21,330. PSNH, $20,000. The driver's ed, this is a pass-through from the state funds, $8,260. And the SAU assessment for March and April, $146,777, for a subtotal of $232,831. That's it.
Any questions? Seeing none, or all in favor? Against? Abstentions? Passes unanimously?
We also discussed, in some detail, the driver's ed program and the after-school program, which Ray is going to bring up later, because I'll hold board in detail. End of report.
Do you want to do that in the body of this, or do you want to wait for your business?
We can bring forward the specific proposals and the financial elements at your next meeting, review them with you, and then ask for some guidance from the board as to how you would like to proceed.
That's what we'll do then. Thanks very much.
I have a quick question, though.
Yes.
Is it, is applied for the driver's ed, is there a possibility that we're not getting money for the state next year, and is that going to affect the contracts?
It's a definite that we aren't going to be getting money from the state, or at least as it stands now, and what it will mean is an approximate increase of $100 per student for the program.
Thank you.
And it also means about $20,000 less revenue to the school district from the state on an annual basis.
So, both contracts are up, so when you see the driver's ed, we're asking for it to continue one more year, it'll likely be a two-tiered kind of contract, one for if the state continues to have revenues and if the state doesn't, so that you'll see what the cost to students will be both ways.
Thank you.
Human resources.
Next, remember.
Six o'clock at the SAU?
Yep.
Planning and communications.
We met tonight, and we discussed continuing our current content on issues such as special education, AYP transitioning. Gary Gerollaman and I are meeting with GTV tomorrow to do a show on technology in the schools, so we've looked for that to be on the air, I'd say, by the end of the week, and then we meet again next month.
C and E. The next meeting is scheduled for the 11th at 7 o'clock at the SAU, following the planning and communications meeting.
The following HR.
HR. I apologize. Thank you. Elementary, facilities renovation.
We received bids from the three selected finalists, and we got those in late this afternoon. We will be preparing review packages to present to the facilities review committee when they meet tomorrow night at the SAU at 4:30.
Terrific. Superintendent's report.
Friday was an unfortunate snow day, as I like to call it, because as I sat in my office at about 9 o'clock, and the roads were clear, and I just wanted to know why Channel 9 News can't get it right. Or no, I wanted to know why at six, at the 6 o'clock news and the 5 o'clock news, all they mentioned was the power outage, it has never mentioned the fact that we didn't get nearly as much snow as they were predicting. I just wanted them to own that for a minute.
Good luck.
Legislation has been very active, as you likely know. I think I've been updating the board with a variety of different things on legislation. It has crossed over, so what was in the House is now in the Senate, what was in the Senate is now in the House, so we'll be watching how those bills come out of there now, so we'll have a little quiet period, and those will be coming out probably in the next two weeks as to where those are at, so I'll, again, keep you updated. Again, the Eddies were at the high school on Thursday, had a great time. I got to go over and talk to people, but I also got to substitute for a little while during the day, so that was kind of fun. It's a little different being in high school classes, and we had, I, I was in a history class, and they finished their assignments, so we get to talk a lot about what they liked and didn't like about Goffstown High School, and the one thing they did like was the milk, so I figured if that was the worst they could come up with, that wasn't such a bad thing. I will also add, one of the comments from the chair of the Eddies Committee had said they don't, when they come to schools, normally their days are very, very structured and scheduled, they're, they go to Class A, Class B, Class C. What the administrative team decided to do was give them several different options, I think there were eight different options of schedules, but then basically said, but you know what, if you have a specific interest, just go to that class. And they said it was one of the very few high schools that they've ever dealt with that just said, go wherever. So, they really appreciated the transparency and the confidence in what we do here at the high school, that we were willing to allow them to just go pretty much anywhere they wanted to go. They said they don't get that very often, so I just wanted to share with the board that that was a nice comment from them, that they were very happy that we were so transparent about what we do here. AYP is going to be released this week, so that's annual yearly progress, that's on Thursday, so I'll, again, keep the board informed on how we do on that. Let's see. And I think that was all. Everybody else has shared the other news I had, so.
Old business. Board retreat. Just, and I didn't ask you. Do we have a review perchance?
I do. I think it's on the bottom.
Do we have? Together with the feedback that I got from members, which largely mirrored an agenda that the superintendent prepared, and with a few modifications, Hank, I pulled some of the statutes that you were looking for, and I think we'll see if we can't find a way to talk about the statutes that govern both the school board and the budget committee in the context of the other presentations. Probably the most important piece of business is trying to figure out a date when we can do this. As nearly as I can tell, a date in April that might have been good would be the 30th, but I don't think the superintendent is available that day. So, barring our ability to find a date in May, which would, excuse me, April, which would have been the 16th, I will circulate something tonight for May Saturdays, and we'll try to schedule something in May. I will also circulate, again, just for your reading and review, a proposed agenda. If there's anything that you think is absent from that, please respond. If you want to add or embellish the items that are on there, please respond. We're going to use a facilitator, unless there's a major objection because of the cost of doing it outside, I think that we'll do it at the SAU. It'll be quarters that we're accustomed to. Hopefully, we can be creative and thoughtful in those quarters as much as we could outside. But I think from a, A, from a logistics standpoint, and B, from a cost standpoint, it probably makes the most sense. So, in terms of getting that scheduled and making sure that everybody's comfortable with the proposed agenda, I'll get that out to everybody tonight in the emails that I have for you. If you didn't get my last or my inaugural email, would you please send me an email at my Goffstown email address, so that I know where to send it to? Just sort of highlights of what the agenda will look like. Review of mission, vision, and goals for the district, looking at budgeting, goals and planning for the next year, building projects, collective bargaining, and review of superintendent's plans and goals generally. But again, I'll send that out to you, so you've got it for probably. Any questions or feedback now on what you know about the retreat?
Looking at maybe like a 9 to 3 o'clock timeframe?
Yeah, and, and here's the wonderful thing, if we get done early, we can leave early. But I'd rather have that much of a block of time in case we find that we get into a subject area that needs more attention.
And what date? Were you looking for?
We're going to have to find a date in May, because there's no good date in April that works for everybody. Hopefully, with that much lead time, we'll be able to find one. Next. Confirmation of committee assignments?
I have them all.
I'm more than happy to get feedback on these. Let's, let's call this, this is where we start. If there's something that somebody really wanted to do and isn't doing it, or something that somebody really didn't want to do.
You got an extra one to put?
Oh. That I asked you to do, let me know, because we should try to accommodate everybody's wants and needs and get them in the best places. I asked, for the, for the most part, the status quo in terms of running each one of the subcommittees remains the same. I asked Ginny if she would chair C and E. She has agreed to do so. Thanks very much. You'll, you'll be in good hands.
I'm sure I won't do as good a job as you did, though.
I'm sure you will. In fact, my guess is you'll probably do better. Again, any feedback, any questions, please let me know.
I just have one question. Do you want to break out GEI and GESS negotiations into two, or do you want the same people doing both? I just, they're going to be at the same time, so I just didn't know if.
No, I thought we would have GESS start earlier.
Earlier?
Right.
Yeah, we did talk about doing it earlier.
Doing that, starting in May.
I just didn't know if you wanted to, the same people.
If, if we find that we're in a, in a place where because of how they, they push apart, we'll push together.
Yep. We'll look at it.
We'll make accommodations on the clock.
And I am not the cable TV committee member. No, we must have said yes once. Way back, and then I came back and I said, I'm not doing this anymore. Was it Gary that volunteered?
Gary volunteered to do the, I don't think he's doing GTV, he's doing the cable committee with the town.
Right.
I can totally ask him if he wants to do GTV.
We'll fix that.
He's really into that now, so he's.
Is it different? Well, yes, the cable contract's up for renewal. He agreed to be on that for us.
Okay. I'll ask Gary if he wants to represent us.
And I don't know why they want. They didn't say would want.
New business. There is, I'm going to just circulate this.
Nope.
Does each one of them?
Nope, that's, that's just for you to sign.
That's just for me?
This is the ethics policy.
Oh, okay. Are we going to just sign this on the back?
Yep, you just, actually, you can sign it right on the front.
Okay.
This is the ethics policy that we ask you to sign every year, just, you can sign it on the front. And I would ask, the teacher reps don't need to sign it, because you signed it last year, and the new reps will sign it when they get nominated.
And there have been no changes in this since '05?
Correct.
Other business that may become? Oh, no, high school graduation.
I'm sorry, I just was going over the committee representatives.
Yes.
Did you want to throw another alternate in for HR or anything?
Yes.
Because I'll gladly volunteer for that, because that's right before C and E.
Yeah.
So, if you want me as an extra alternate, just in case they need it for forms, you can always give me a call.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
High school graduation.
So, I would like to bring forward the date of June 16th for high school graduation. It's the Thursday before the last day, St. Ace is available. We typically do it on a Thursday night. They are available. What I need is, though, is a motion and approval from the board, because we had the snow day yesterday, seniors have to go to school 175 days, that makes us at 174. So, I would ask the board if we can continue to have it on June 16th, but request a one-day waiver from the state for the seniors. They would, they still meet the hour requirements necessary, they just don't meet the physical day requirements by doing that.
Do I have a motion?
I like the motion.
Kent, seconded by Sue. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously?
Great. Plan your trips, June 16th. They'll be happy.
They'll be very happy, thank you.
Yeah, they're not graduating last this year.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's not April 15th yet.
That's right. Yeah, that's true.
Other business that may become, may come legally before the board? Seeing none, any resignations or retirements?
Yes, we have all of your teacher nominations, administrator nominations coming forward tonight, so we're going to start with, I'm going to send around two sheets. One is going to be your list of non-renewals, resignations, retirements, and co-curriculars. The second sheet is actually your list of teachers that you're nominating tonight. So, that's your first item, agenda item at the top. So, to stay organized, let's just start from the top, and start with teacher nominations. This is a big packet. These are all the teachers that we're bringing forward, I'm bringing forward for nomination for the 11, 12 school year.
Just one question. Is there, and I think I know the answer to this, because you've probably answered it every year for the last nine.
I've only been here six.
Well, it has, the question has been, you are absolutely correct. The grant-funded positions?
Yes.
Are, is there language in those contracts that indicates that they are grant-funded?
Yes, and that it's contingent upon the grant.
Okay.
And those are a variety of different grants, either special ed or Title I.
Is it fair to say that special ed positions that are grant-funded, if the grants are not there, if they are necessarily filled out of the budget?
Correct.
The elementary position at Bartlett, it was a one-year position. Is that because the teacher was on leave or something?
Yes, yeah, any of those on the, you're looking down on the non-renewals?
Right.
Yes, those would be, any when it says one year, those are teachers who were on a year's leave of absence, so they were just one-year positions.
Okay.
Yep. So, to start with, we'll need a motion to accept the nominations of all the teachers.
So.
Motion by Suzanne, third and second.
I'll second it.
Second by Keith. Questions? Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously?
Okay, then the next are teacher non-renewals. Teacher non-renewals are for a variety of reasons. Some are one-year positions, some were certified just for one year. Some are for performance, some are for budget cuts. So some may come back depending on where the governor's budget comes in at. So there's a variety of reasons. The one-year positions and the permission to employees, which are one-year positions, um, are listed there.
She needs a motion to approve.
Yeah, I need a motion to approve the non-renewals.
I have a motion to approve the non-renewals. I need a motion. Keith makes the motion. May I have a second? Suzanne? Any questions? Observations, concerns?
I have one question. I'm going to wait to not public it to Personnel and that. We have, we reserve it.
Do you need an answer in order to make your decision? Seeing no further questions, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Passes unanimously?
Okay, we have, um, several teacher resignations. Again, a variety of different reasons for them. Some of them were teachers who were out on leave, who have decided not to come back to stay home with their children. Some are in lieu of non-renewals, some are because of one-year position. So again, a variety of different reasons. Some are budget cuts that they've decided to resign instead to save other positions.
Do I have a motion to accept the teacher resignations?
So moved.
Can't move, Suzanne seconded?
Okay. Whatever.
Any questions? Discussion?
Not in public. I think it's double.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Unanimous?
We have one retirement. With regret, Martha Benton has decided to retire at the end of this school year. It was our guidance director.
Huge regret.
Yes, huge regret. It was a hard decision for her.
And do you need a motion to accept your resignation?
Yep, for retirement.
I want a motion to accept the resignation with regrets.
Ginny seconded? All in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Passes unanimously?
Did you say her only married name?
Oh, I did. I did.
If we can skip down to co-curricular nominations, we just have three volunteers, which just you'd need to be informed of. They're just volunteers for, uh, varsity baseball and JV baseball. And we have one co-curricular nomination, which you'll need to, um, make a motion to approve, is Justin Huff, who is, will be our university football coach in the fall.
Do we have to do that tonight? If it's for next season, next school year?
No.
I'd, I'd like us to have a discussion on some of these things.
Okay.
Okay. Is it, is it something that we can, uh, discuss this evening in non-public?
Perhaps.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's mine.
So I guess you just have, can we table it left in non-public?
Table this nomination, please.
Any questions about the co-curricular nominations that are just notification of? Then we are sent away.
So then we have administrator and others, which are SSS people, um, which are people who don't follow within the union. Um, I think you have another sheet for those. Um, I don't, I'm thinking you want to go into non-public to, to discuss those contracts?
Yes.
And I think that'd be a good.
I need a motion to go into non-public?
So moved.
You have a second? I don't have any. I need a lot of approval. And nods all around. Thank you.